Breezy Point Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. All meetings order. And I would like to welcome a new commission member this evening, Lee Brisbane. Welcome.
Thank you.
Lee, I think you'll enjoy our meetings and they're always interesting. So we welcome you to the commission.
Thank you very much.
Patrick, will you do the opening?
Sure will. Lee, you want to stand, raise your right hand? You read what's up there and you're going to be good to go.
Lee, Ily Brisbane, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, of the state of Minnesota, and faithfully discharge the duties of Planning Commission in the city of Breezy Point, in the county of Crow Wing, and the state of Minnesota to the best of my judgment and ability, so help me God.
Very good, I'll get you a copy of that. You got it ready. Deb was working over how to get that. Have you signed that document? And Mr. Chair, he is legitimate. We have a form.
Great. Again, welcome, Lee.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is election of officers.
I nominate Joe Ayers to be chairperson.
That was fast.
And since, and since Roger's not here, I nominate him to be the co-chairman.
Let's dispose of Chair First, Breezy.
Oh, okay, all right, okay.
And I'll ask again for nominations for chairperson. Any nominations for chairperson? If not, all in favor of Mr. Ayers speaking or returning as chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. Question.
Well, again, again, since he's not here, he wasn't here the last time he was nominated. I would nominate Roger, uh, Jerry, Roger. Get them all mixed up.
Any further nominations for vice chair? Any further nominations for vice chair? If not, are you making that motion, Breezy?
I've made the motion.
Yeah, you made the motion. I'm not sure I even asked for a second for the last motion, but...
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second. Any discussion or any, any further nominations, I should say. If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Rule of the November 10th minutes.
I'm watching to approve of that.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion of that motion? If not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed. Council liaison report. And we have a new council liaison, a new council member and former commission member is our new liaison, Mark.
Yes, yeah, I'm happy to be here with you guys. The first city council meeting of 2021 was very exciting. There were a lot of new appointments. Obviously, you can see that I took over for council member Maroni as the Planning and Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission liaison. In December, the Coalition for the Road Committee met twice to discuss the Akerson-Nelson-Wildacres-Bushman Collaborative Road Project, which selection had been formally made at the first city council meeting for Bolton and Mank to approve them to perform a feasibility study on the Bushman Ran-Chet portion of Breezy Point. Recent updates are showing that ideal is in favor as well, and it sounds like theirs was approved. I believe that Jenkins has their city council meeting this evening. Pequot voted against it three to two, but it sounds like they'll be coming back to the table January 25th to possibly reassess that decision. Mr. Rogencamp, or I should say Mayor Rogencamp, was added to signatory for, you know, checks, signing checks for the city of Breezy Point, all, all basic administrative transition between ex-mayor Lilahy to new mayor Rogencamp.
Any questions, Mark? Mark, is, is there any special construction of that road given the amount of traffic on it?
The ultimate plan would be to construct it in a fashion that the, that Crow Wing County would take it over from us, and it would be their maintenance responsibility, alleviating a lot of expense that it could cost the city. So the end goal is to hand it off to the county. You know, everything looks very promising right now, but we're still in the infancy stages. I, I was in support of the Bolton-Mank selection. I think they gave a great presentation in December. So did Widdsith, so did WSB. So everybody seems more than qualified, you know, to help us.
Any questions, Mark? Good night, thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you for your willingness to put up with us.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is open forum number one. If you would like to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and address. If no one would like to speak, I will close open forum number one. You'll have another opportunity later on in the agenda. We'll move to our next agenda item, which is a public hearing to consider a variance request by Michael Seedy. Is that how you pronounce the name?
Mike Said.
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 Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mike. I will open the public hearing for this variance request and, and ask Michael, the applicant, if you would like to make a presentation, again, if you would come to the podium, Michael, and introduce yourself. Yes, please.
So, like I said, my name's Mike Said. I've been enjoying this area since 2002 when I met my wife, fell in love with it, knew that the entire, my plan was to retire up in this area, so starting to lay roots in here. I've got lots of family ties and lots of friends and family. I was married in Pequot Lakes. I can go on and on, so you get the idea. But essentially, what I'm doing is I bought a piece of land a few years ago with the intention of putting a beach on it, beach for my kids. I've got two kids, nine and seven. I've had meetings with Jerry and Patrick and Tom, and my kids are everything to me, and I want to provide a beach for them to enjoy this area. So I applied for a permit and received it in June of 2017. I've been working on that beach ever since, countless hours, and I would like to continue that process on here, asking for a variance permit to, to do so. Because of the situation with that land specifically, I would need to put a retaining wall to safely create a beach for, for my kids and myself. So that's what I'm asking for. Is there anything else?
Thank you, Michael. Any questions of Michael that's before? Maybe, Lee? Any, any questions of...
Not this time, no.
Person? Breezy?
Not at this time.
Okay. Might have questions a little bit later in, in the process, Mike, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Staff review of this application, Jerry?
This application is for a variance to work in the shore impact zone and within the setback, bluff setback area, or the bluff impact area. The application is Michael Seedy, Seedy, I'm sorry. The location of the property is 11987 Fawn Lake Road. This is on the north side of Fawn Lake Road, adjacent to Fawn Lake. The property is zoned residential, or recreational development lake. The applicable city codes is 153.030, 153.044, and 153.045. In June of 2017, a shoreline alteration permit was approved to create a sand blanket. Shoreland alteration rules for sand blanket, 50 feet wide or one-half the width of the lot, with a maximum width of 25 feet back from the OHW, less than 10% slope. At the time this permit is, was issued, there was no consideration given to the slope of the property, which is, at a later date, was determined to be a bluff. After the permit was issued, Mr. Seedy stated, started working on the beach improvement and determined that a retaining wall would be necessary to control the erosion and manage the slope. Mr. Seedy proceeded to excavate portions of the hillside to carve out areas for the retaining wall and the sand blanket. It should be noted that he has done some extensive work out there, and it's all been done by hand. There are no machines out there or anything like that. He's, he's undertaken quite a project and, and actually, there probably isn't very good access for machines unless it, it was done in the, in the wintertime. Again, there's a proposed retaining wall that is now being considered. It is considered a structure within the setback area, and a structure within the required setback must obtain a variance to be constructed. Work has been halted, and erosion control has been installed to protect the lake from the runoff. The extensive vegetation removal and the excavation of the bluff has rendered this site as a potential environmental risk of the lake. It is questionable whether reestablishment of vegetation control only to control runoff is a practical or even possible. Quite frankly, that's, luckily, we've, we've not had a lot of rainstorms and, and those type of things that have, would have had a negative effect on, on the lake, and, and so far, we're crossing our fingers that we can come to some conclusion and get this taken care of. The application, the applicant is requesting a variance to permit excavation of the bluff area, construct a structure within the setback of the recreational development zone. There, in the report, there's definitions of variance, and there's reviews, which is word for word out of the zoning ordinance. The findings, the applicant contends that a practical difficulty is that a sand blanket beach is impractical, impractical without a retaining wall, and the difficulty is caused by the slope of the property. Applicant is requesting variance to legally validate the excavation, install sand blanket, construct retaining wall to protect improvements, ensure the integrity of the bluff, and protect the lake from future erosion. The following findings may be used to support denial of the variance. The commission finds no practical difficulty, exist, existing conditions were prompted by actions of the landowner. The following findings of fact may be used to support approval of variance request. Permit approval of the sand blanket for 2017. Sand blanket installation cannot be accomplished without excavation into the bluff. Extensive excavation and vegetation removal has compromised the integrity of the bluff. Reconstruction of the bluff, bluff and reestablishment of vegetation would result in future erosion, environmental damage to the lake, and construction of the retaining wall preserved the integrity of the bluff. Potential actions, approve the variance with conditions. Excavation within the shore impact zone. Construct retaining wall within X feet of the OHW and within the shore impact zone. Retaining wall to be designed by a registered engineer. Retaining wall to be completed by July 1, 2021. I don't know whether that's a realistic date, that was just a standpoint for the, for the staff report. Vegetation to be reestablished on all areas built and adjacent to the retaining wall, and erosion control to remain until all vegetation is reestablished. There is also, I passed out this evening, a comment sheet from the DNR. The DNR is recommending the following, if in fact the variance is approved, the retaining wall should be designed by registered engineer and construction plans provided to the, the planning commission. Vegetation plan prepared by professional landscaper or the Crow Wing County Soil and Water Conservation District should be submitted for approval by the planning commission. Vegetation plan should include a mix of native trees, shrubs, grasses, and fobs. Compliance inspection following vegetation by the planning commission and/or board of review or staff. The amount of fill material brought in for the creation of the sand beach should be limited to the allowed in the previously obtained shoreline alteration permit. Those are the comments from the DNR. Typically, they wouldn't be looking at doing anything or even considering something in that bluff impact zone, but the fact that, that this work has been done already almost prompts you to, to allow the retaining wall to reestablish the bluff and protect the lake. I also should note that in working with Michael, he has been very cooperative. He's, he's done just about everything that we've asked him to do up until this point. It's taken a long time, but we're trying to work through this, and, and quite frankly, it's a new problem for him, and it's a new problem for us.
Questions of Chair, Breezy?
In looking at the shoreline alterations permit application that was in the package, it indicated that it was approved by the Planning and Zoning Department, and there's a signature there, I'm not sure whose it is, but was it, did, did it come before planning and zoning? It didn't come before planning and zoning. That was a shore alteration permit that's typically approved administratively. Joe Redbird was the one that signed off on that permit.
That was in 2017.
That was in 2017. Yeah, that was before, I think I was involved. I don't know, were you involved?
Well, it's on the commission, but, you know...
It didn't come before the commission.
You're saying it didn't have to, right?
Yeah. Okay.
It's an over-the-counter permit that is typically handled by staff.
Okay.
With that permit, is there any, it says there's something attached. Is there any visual as to what it looked like as part of the approval process, or is it more on the applicant, sorry, the applicant to make sure that they have a space available for a blanket to be situated?
You want to go, go through that again?
Yeah. So when, share with me how the application process works for this type of permit. Do they have to show that they have an area? So I'm looking at the diagram here, and it makes me, the way it looks today, it doesn't look like there's any room for a blanket at all.
These were after the, these are after-the-fact pictures. At, at time that it was submitted, it was for a sand blanket. Typically, a sand blanket is allowed. There was no discussion about a bluff or the slope of the property at all. It, it may have been something that slipped through the cracks at the time. But typically, that's not something that goes in front of the planning commission. The only reason it would go in front of the planning commission, if that were an application today with a retaining wall, it would have certainly come before you before that. But it was an application that came without a retaining wall, it came just as a sand blanket.
And my question is more, was there room to put a sand blanket in the beginning, or was this something that the land, and maybe that's a question I can ask later, but I'm just curious, what it looked like topographically before the construction or the excavating had been done?
I can't speak for what it looked like at the time, based on the topographical maps that you, you have in front of you. I would say, no, there probably wasn't adequate room to do that, or if it was, it would have been a minimal blanket. Was there a discussion that it was into a bluff? There was no discussion at all when this project first started.
So then I have a question for you too, Jerry. I'm looking further in here, and it looks like if, under 153071, if I'm interpreting this right, if there's plans to, let me find it, basically excavate in an area that may be a bluff, typically, there's some sort of review recommended beforehand. So I'm wondering, is that typical, that we would suggest they have somebody come out and review before doing the excavating to make sure that there was...
Quite frankly, I think it's, this one slipped through the cracks. There's, there's no doubt about it. We should have, we should be asking for topographical information before we even approve a, a sand blanket permit. That being said, we're dealing with a situation right now that has some environmental issues, and trying to get to a point where we can figure out how to deal with it.
Any other questions?
No.
Question? Lee? I've asked for public input. Would, would anyone like to come to the podium and comment on this application?
Guess I would, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate your deliberation.
Use yourself, sir.
Gary Abach on 29464 Shoreview, council. Three terms, planning commission, four terms, council. I have watched these mistakes go on for a long time. Falling through the cracks doesn't, in my humble opinion, allow a variance to be granted, gentlemen and lady. It establishes a precedent that has been enforced by our DNR and planning and zoning here for years. Falling through the cracks is no excuse, and if this variance passes, it will set a precedence, my friends, I assure precedent, that we don't want if this city. And one final comment, I wasn't going to speak tonight, and I didn't even know this was on the agenda, I didn't look at it, but I'm glad I did, and I'm so glad I came. There's going to be a workshop the 25th of January, where this city is going to examine exactly the future of this city. Each and every one of us will be allowed to share our thoughts on what we see as a future, and that's enough, because I could go on for a long time on the issues that have been brought to me, especially last year, by nine individuals, and that I will be presenting on the 25th. I thank you for your time, and we're going to get to the bottom of our planning, zoning, its enforcement, and how it's run. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I actually do need to clarify, it, it's, it is open to the public, but there is no space for the public to speak at that meeting on the 25th, as all workshops are not open for public discussion.
So I retract my motion or my, my statement, is that correct?
I'm just clarifying that historically, there's not been...
On the record or not, that's what you want or not?
It's part of the record already.
Thank you. And I, I didn't know. You could stop.
Patrick, this is a workshop for the city council.
City council workshop, yep.
Would anyone else like to speak?
If I may, Joe?
Yes, Mark.
I, I do want to point out one thing that Jerry did state, though, that the applicant has been working very hard to remedy this. So while it was something that has been pointed out to fall through the cracks, and we don't want to create a precedent for just approving variances freely, it, it should be noted that this gentleman is clearly trying, and that at least speaks volumes, in my opinion only.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing on this application and move to our next agenda item, which is the commission taking official action on this variance request. Jerry, I have a quick question. Has the DNR memo been incorporated into your communication, your memo to us, or did that come after?
The DNR memo came after.
That's what I thought.
They were notified of the public hearing, and they, they commented on it. It's interesting that their comments are very close to what my staff report was.
Especially the fact that a retaining wall should be a part of what is done to protect the lake.
Right.
And is that if the variance is approved?
Pardon?
I'm sorry. If, and that is their recommendation, if the variance is approved, is that correct?
The variance...
They didn't indicate if the variance was not approved, if they had a recommendation.
Your mic is not working, because you're not, you have to keep it on in front of your face.
Their indication is that if the variance, if you see fit to approve the variance, that these conditions should be attached to that.
I was curious, I guess, if the variance wasn't approved, what recommendations they would have to restore the vegetation and that type of thing?
If the, if the variance was not approved, what would have to happen is that that would have to be put back into the state that it was in before.
I have a question. So that property, was that a buildable piece of property?
No.
Okay, just to, okay.
And to clarify, it's not buildable due to the steep slope there, and then the setbacks, there wouldn't be any buildable area.
Okay. That was my question, and if, if it was buildable, with that situation with the bluff or that wall, would that have been a whole different ballgame then?
No, because it still would, the structure would have been in the setbacks, and that's not what is, is allowed. And that was never discussed as part of the initial sand blanket. When we're talking about a sand blanket, and I've had to learn this too, even though I've worked for cities with three different lakes, we've never issued these kind of permits before, so if someone comes in, issues a sand blanket, it's a small area where there's sand so that you can have access to the lake. That's why it's an over-the-counter, very simple process, just, it would have been given out. Now, I'm probably defending the previous city administrator, but I don't know that I would have issued the, the permit, but Joe had been here for 10 years, so it wouldn't have been uncommon for him to do that. Now, what was done there, you can see, is obviously there's encroachment into the hillside deep, and then there's going to have to be a substantial retaining wall, and that's why the variance is required.
Jerry, I'm, I'm trying to wrap my head around... Jerry, I'm trying to wrap my head around the fact that if this is not approved, it would have to be restored to how it was before. But it seems to me the DNR is saying, to protect the lake now, it needs a retaining wall.
Based on my conversation with DNR folks, they're telling me that it would be almost impractical and very difficult to get that back to the shape that it was in before, just because of this steep slope and the potential erosion and the inability to reestablish vegetation fast enough to stop any potential damage.
This may need, my next question may need an answer from Michael. My understanding, Michael, is that this retaining wall has a great system apart as, a great system as a part of this, which I assume absorbs most of the runoff that would be coming down that bank.
You have to actually come up to the microphone, otherwise you won't be able to be heard. We hadn't said that before, so.
Yeah, so the product that I have drawn up here in the print, as you can see, it's called Keystone. It's from W...
It's in front of me too, so if I'm not looking behind you, I'm looking at this.
From a local company, WW Thompson. I do have a good friend of mine who's into landscaping business. He recommended it. It's a 75-pound block. It's not a Menard special. It's not, it's something I got a coupon for, and I spent 200 bucks at Menards, spent thousands of dollars in getting the best block that I could for this project. So there is a grading system, and there's a huge, I don't want to say huge, but there's a comprehensive manual that goes along with it, because it is a structural block. Going back to my previous comment, it's not a Menard special that's going to topple over. This is, I, when I, generally speaking, when I do something, I want to do it right, and I do it once. And that's the way, the mindset of creating this print, as you can see. But there is a grading system. It's how, you know, professionals would do it, and it's, the manual is created by structural engineers. So that's, you know, it's, I'm not a structural engineer, I'm an industrial engineer, so completely different. So I'm just going through the manual, wanting to get the best product for that specific project. So I'm not sure as far as the specifics, as far as the grading and all that, but I know it's all laid out very detailed in the manual that came with the product.
Thank you.
Joe, may I ask the applicant one question? Excuse me. So thank you very much. You discussed a landscaping professional that you had been in contact with. Have you spoken to a structural engineer at all?
I have. I called after one of our meetings. There's Don Miller, who is one of the reps, local reps. He gave me a bunch of information. He's the one that turned me on to the website that had the detailed manual as well. And he kind of walked me through how the manual was designed and put together, and all the information was there. Based on my specific situation, they do have it engineered out, so you know that whatever, you know, how it's set up, and some of these depictions are directly from the manual, it's set up specifically for that kind of an application.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? This is complicated still.
So I have a question for Jerry. If this, if we denied it and had a question, like to come back to ask for the DNR to come back with what it would take to restore it? And if they say this cannot be restored, that would be something I would want to know. Is that possible to say, deny for now and get more information? And would you be able to do that without having an issue come back? I'm just making sure procedural-wise that would be allowed.
I don't know the answer to that question. I think if in fact you denied the variance, I think the next direction that we would take would be to say to the applicant, you have to show how you're going to put this back to the way it was. And you're going to have to present a plan. At that time, we would give that plan to the DNR and ask them to see if that's a feasible plan or not.
So in that picture there, that's basically the soil is coming down, right? Is that what's happening?
Well, that picture there is showing that there's, the excavations that have been done. It shows that there's soil that is, has come down into the lake. That's not a recent picture. The recent picture would show that there's new erosion control in front of that that's preventing any further damage. But that was a very early picture?
Please.
Look, the lake is frozen.
While he's searching for that, can I?
Sure.
I've been on the Pelican Lake Association Board for many years.
Actually, Mike, if we can see if we can't put it out, please.
Something like that?
Yep. I'm sorry, we had some enlargements, but it just wasn't working. So can you see it right here is the retaining wall that he's talking about? Or, I'm sorry, the filter fabric? Sorry, Mike, I didn't mean to kick you away. And then this is the other pictures that he's showing. See the filter fabric? That was like a July meeting that we had, I think, the four of us with...
Yeah, that was September 3rd, I want to say.
Tracy?
Okay. And serving on the Pelican Lake Association Board, and I do not now serve on it, but one of the issues that continually came up is the idea of destroying the shoreline, taking it away from nature, if you will, okay? One of the items, I believe I heard during the development of the Breezy Point Long Range Planning, was that there was discussion that we should not be issuing variances to get along, to go along. We should be seriously looking at them and not just give them away because somebody already started something. It's sad, the guy's done a hell of a lot of good work. But as much as I hate to agree with Bachen, pardon me, sir. I think there is some issue about approving a variance because we did things wrong before. And it's kind of like, you know, well, I don't know what else to say. So I have mixed emotions about approving it with the DNR suggestions or just denying it. So that's my thought, I haven't decided yet.
Well, at this point, would someone...
Could I make a motion?
Can make a suggestion? Can we, and I realize there's, the guy wants to get it done, but can we table this and refer it to the DNR for recommendations on what might be done at this point in time? I don't see why not.
That was kind of the question I was getting at is, because they were silent on what would happen if we deny it. And I guess my concern is, I don't want to have further damage to the lake. At the end of the day, I want to make sure the lake is protected. So I guess my gut feeling was to deny it now, ask the DNR to come back and say, is there an issue if we deny it? Is it going to, is it going to prevent, you know, additional runoff and pollution or whatever else that could be happening because of what's already been done? Is it worse to do that than have some other recommendation they may have to come back with?
I would move to table this, pending a review and discussion, whether it's in a public meeting or however you see fit, with the DNR to determine what is the best course for the long term of the lake and the precedence it might set or might not set.
Patrick?
I understand that the motion really isn't to table, it's to continue it to the next meeting for an answer. Because if you table it, then there has to be a whole different action to bring it back.
Okay, well, then I would amend, would suggest doing just what you said.
Continue the discussion to the next meeting.
Yes.
Only a technical issue. Land use issues have 60-day response.
Pardon?
Land use issues are supposed to be resolved within 60 days of the application. Okay? We're still within that 60 days, but if we push it out to February, we're going to be outside that 60 days, and there could be some contention that it's an automatic approval. The only way that can be extended past that 60 days is if the applicant agrees to the extension. He's shaking his head that he does agree to that. You're fine. That's a technical issue that I think we should be aware of when we do deal with some of these land use issues. The applicant has been cooperative in the past and is, continues to be, and I, you know, then I don't have a problem with a referral and a tabling.
I have one other question. I promise. When I looked at, I didn't go down to the shore, but I looked at it from the road. And you had mentioned there were other beaches on that lake. People, I, from where I was, I couldn't see them on the, I couldn't see any on the other side of the lake. Okay, and I also was curious, is that in Cross Lake? Across the lake? Where is the city line? Doesn't city line cut right through the lake?
Michael's showing the picture so that everybody can see what, I want to say it's pretty much northeast of your property?
Yeah, as you're standing in the beach, it would be directly to the lake. It's called Three Dock Town.
And there, the hillside bluff, they don't have quite the...
Way more...
It's level, yeah. So when they put in a sand blanket, it would have been boom, bang, bang kind of thing? And then there was like a little retaining wall, like two or three feet, where you're looking at 15, 20 feet. I don't have...
Yeah, I've got the print and it has the dimensions. So do you understand where that is, is it going to be north?
Yeah, yes, yes, yeah.
It would be off to your right now.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Does the city line go right through that lake? It's based on the one...
It goes through the lake, yes.
Okay. So the south side's in Breezy Point, the north side's in Cross Lake?
Right.
Do you have a motion to be, have a second?
I have a second, that moment.
We did have a motion and a second, so we're still in this discussion. Does everyone understand what this motion is doing? This is all kind of complicated now. And it would seem to me the best thing that could happen here is that the restoration of this project gives Michael what he wants. It almost feels that way, the DNR is saying, to restore this block, there's probably going to have to be a retaining wall. And it seems like if there's a retaining wall, maybe you probably have the space you need for a beach. I'm not an expert. I don't, I don't want to predict what the DNR is going to say and what our conclusion is, but it would seem to me a restoration of this is probably going to need a retaining wall. Does that make sense to you, Jerry?
I think that's a practical explanation.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Motion passed.
We thank you for your efforts.
Michael, your kids are appreciative of this.
If you wouldn't mind, can I show you one item?
Yes.
This I have hanging in my office. My seven-year-old daughter, it's been in my office for about a year now. Can everyone see it?
Do you read it for me?
Yeah, I can read it for you. It says, "I love you, Dad, I hope you finish the beach." And it's not spelled properly, but she put a nice turtle in there. That's all the motivation I need to do whatever you guys ask me to do.
Michael, thank you for your patience with us. We appreciate it.
Happy, I'm happy to, I'm happy it's worked so well and everyone's been so cooperative.
My hope is that we can find a mutually beneficial solution to this, the protection of the lake and the beach for your kids. Thank you. Open forum number two. Again, if you would like to speak, please come to the podium and get your name and address.
Interesting meeting. I'd like to address Mr. Donovan's comment. You don't agree with me. Was that correct, sir?
No, I said, I hate to admit that I agree with part of what you said.
Thank you, that's all I need to hear. I didn't understand.
Maybe you hate him.
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
Everybody went out and looked at that property?
Yep.
Were you out there, Lee?
I did not, no.
I would recommend you do so. When I joined the planning commission in my first one, I made that same mistake. You got to get out there and look at this stuff, guys and girl. Just let that be a lesson. Not for me, it'll come back to bite you. Thanks for your time, good meeting, tough decision.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in open forum number two? If not, I'll close open forum number two and ask if there are any other... Jerry, you handled this up?
I did, it's a synopsis of building permits and valuations that have been happening for the last five or six years. The values for year 2000 are also on that, it's updated. We show a slight increase in value. Big increase in the number of single home permits. Value from one year to the next is approximately, for the last two years, actually, it's been approximately $11 million worth of value increased in the last two years, or each year for the last two years. So it does show some progress and some interest in Breezy. Sometimes you don't always see that there's activity, but there is quite a bit of activity going on. You don't see it because Breezy's so spread out and retrieved and... But there's all kinds of stuff happening.
Jerry, do you have any idea how this compares to Cross Lake or Peacock Lakes?
I haven't done anything this year. In the previous years, we've taken a kind of a survey of residential home permits from communities to communities. We've been one or two in Crow Wing County for the last five or six years.
Number one or two builds, having the most builds.
And during that time, weren't we the fastest-growing community also in Crow Wing County? Do I remember that?
I don't remember that being said, but we've, again, had... I don't remember that being said, but we've again had the most building permits for single-family residences of any place in Crow Wing.
When you say, the interesting thing about growing is home occupancy and Breezy Point is well-known for having 40% vacant, partially because we have a large percentage of snowbirds and the VRBOs. And so when I was over at Aitken County, it was the same type of situation, the census people would call me up and say, Pat, there's nobody going to this house, there's no driveway plowed. I said, that's because it's a cabin, it's a, have you not heard of a rental place? And so we have a large number of winter people that head down south. If some year they decided not to head down south, our population could boom substantially, no question whatsoever. We do have the third largest population by the Census Bureau and we anticipate that that's going to at least continue if not grow. I don't think we'll ever overtake the other two, but we'll give it a try someday.
It seems as though at least most, if not all of that development that is occurring and has occurred behind prime time.
Actually, if you go into my office, I've got a picture for the last three years of all the homes that have been built. I've got the whole city map and all the yellow ones were built in 2018, red was 2019 and blue was 2020. So you can see they're spread out all throughout the entire community, going up to Timberlane Point, all the way down to County Road 4, over to the townhomes, up into, by West Street in that area. So it is very well spread out, which is the unique thing about Breezy Point, where if you go out to Brainerd or Baxter, they'll open up an 80-lot subdivision and that's where they'll build primarily. There might be some minor fill-in, but for Breezy, we've got the close to 1,000 lots, including tax-forfeited lots that are available, so people like the opportunities and Mr. Miller and I were just talking today about his market study and people like the larger lots and that there are a lot of lots available.
I think the only place that you can really see a concentration of new building is basically the townhomes that are being built in White Perch. Other than that, there's no geographic, one geographic area that's more than the other. There, it's pretty well diversified.
You can go to the streets just south of City Hall, there's three streets there. I think there's six, seven new single-family homes right back here just this year. It's a nice smattering of growth from 200,000 all the way up to, you know, 400, $500,000 homes in the city.
Well, congratulations to us. That's all a good thing.
Joe, if I can, I'd like to point out that some of that increase in value is also due to the increase in material costs that have occurred, which of course then in order to make that up in your margins, you're selling the homes at a higher price. I know firsthand that the ones in Delwood Acres have gone, they started originally at $199 and are now at $229.9 for the ones that we're building. So if that gives you any indication on value and increasing material cost and price that speaks to this.
Don't you also think, Mark, that it exaggerates the challenge we face with workforce housing?
Well, I would say that currently the real estate market has such a low inventory in it so that because of the, you know, lack of supply and the increase in demand, that people will continue to purchase whatever is available and that that lack of availability is also driving the prices up.
The one thing I should also comment about, the values that are on that do not include the land. That is only the amount of building permit for the structure itself. So the land comes in at a different price too, so there, that probably equalizes the increase in cost to the structures.
Interesting. Thank you. Was this kind of intended as our continued discussion of workforce housing?
That's not the intent, that wasn't the intent for doing it. The intent for doing it was to show that there, the amount of activity, where the activity is and, or the type of activity that's happening and to show a comparison from year to year. We, it wasn't workforce housing specific, it wasn't anything specific other than showing activity.
Thank you. Any, anything else for our discussion tonight? Lee?
No. No, sir.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you.